Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Protam Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Blatts.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Wyrick.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Councilman Haney, will you lead us in the pledge?
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. We have Jamie Fleming. Is Jamie here?
Mr. Fleming unfortunately had to cancel today and his travel plans got extended, so I'm sorry, we'll need to reschedule to a future date.
Okay, we'll reschedule that. Approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes in the agenda?
So moved.
I think we do have two that we wanted to pull.
From the consent calendar.
Yeah, on the, oh pardon me, yeah.
I'd like to pull H from the consent calendar.
Okay, H and I from the consent calendar we'll pull off. Okay, and Paul, your motion stands?
Stands.
Okay, second.
Second.
Okay, if there's no objection, the agenda is approved as amended. For the benefit of the audience, you know, we are experimenting with a different approach that we announced last meeting, holding the public comments at eight o'clock, trying to get through the agenda. Obviously, I shouldn't say obviously, but the public is certainly welcome to comment on everything on the agenda as we go, and then when we get to the public comment, that is the things not on the agenda. So that'll be at eight o'clock, and if you, there's something you'd like to say that is not currently on our agenda, I ask that you fill out a card and get it to the clerk, because once we start at eight o'clock, that will, we will not accept additional cards at that point. So, okay, let's move to the consent agenda, which has been approved, all except for H and I. Bill, you want to talk about H?
We had, Mr. Mayor, I think the prior action was to approve the agenda, not to approve the rest of the consent calendar.
No.
Yeah, it was to approve the agenda.
Oh, the agenda, okay.
Right, to approve the agenda, but not actually voting on the items.
You are correct. Okay, do I have a motion on the consent?
We'll move to approve the consent.
With the ex, with?
With the exception of H and I.
Of H and I, okay.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Any objection? So ordered. Okay, Bill, go.
On H, my concern is that, I know we have two bids for the three flashing beacons projects. They are high danger situations that we've recognized for some time. It may well be that the, with the disparity in the bids, that maybe the low bid is not really qualified, but if the other bid is within budget and within expectations, I am concerned about a delay in getting going on these flashing beacons, because it is a recognized public safety danger, the existing crosswalks and, if what we're doing is maybe saving a little money by going through a whole bid process again that delays the improvement in public safety, I'm just not sure that money is worth the, the extension of public safety danger over time. So, I just, I'm just wondering why we don't proceed. If we have a qualified bid that's within expectations and seems reasonable, why we just don't proceed?
Well, is our Public Works Director here, maybe to shed a little light on that?
Yes, good evening.
A little flashing light.
Right, rapid flashing. Yes, agreed, certainly a high-risk situation we want to fix as soon as possible. The concern was, number one, with the bids received, we only had a high and a low bid, ranged by $60,000. There's a concern with a low bid as well. I know they've been essentially banned from county bidding for the past five years.
Right, so throw that one out, yeah.
But that was, now you go up 60 from 90 to 150.
Is the higher one within expectations?
No, it was exceeding. And then I think the second part was Maricopa. We need to get that bid out too, so we put them together and try to move them quickly. It isn't ideal during the holiday season, the rainy season, but I think we can.
By how much did it exceed expectations?
Let's see, the, the second, yeah, we had expectation at about 100,000, or 106,000, and the second bid was 149,000.
Right. Well, you know what I'm concerned about. By the time we go around advertising for bids, getting the bids in, evaluating the bids, doing a proceed, we're talking, we could be talking two, three months, easy.
For installation?
Yeah, I mean, a delay, a delay, a further delay.
Yeah, I think this will delay us about a month and a half, and we'll get all of them done.
A month and a half?
If we awarded.
Bidding, a month and a half is a delay, or doing a complete rebid?
If we awarded that bid right now, they'd have about 90 working days to complete it, so it's gonna end up taking, they have it up to three to four months to complete the work. So, we can get this other one out, we've already advertised it for this upcoming Sunday, so we'll start the clock.
Oh, you've already advertised the consolidated.
We can even fast-track it and bring it back to council, let's see, the later October meeting. We're gonna go early November, but if we really want to fast-track it, we can clip that three weeks as well.
I would suggest fast-track.
Yeah.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yeah, Randy?
Greg, the Maricopa, is that the two crosswalks over by the high school?
It's all four existing crosswalks on Maricopa would all receive flashing beacons.
So you're talking about those four and then these three?
Right.
All at one time?
Yes.
Okay.
So it should be, we fast-track it, completed February.
And the question is, with the discussion going on with complete streets regarding converting those highways from two lanes to one lane, is that gonna impact any of the crosswalks or any of the activities?
The flashing beacons would be used at the same crosswalks.
So, so that would not impact it, no matter what we do to those roads?
No.
Okay.
No. There's curb extensions proposed, but that's a separate issue, the concrete flower work.
Right.
Okay.
Well, then I, I'll move, and see if this was worded correct, and you stop me if I'm wrong. Basically authorize, accept recommendation number four. I'll move approval to authorize staff to request bids for the Ojai Avenue-Maricopa Highway pedestrian crossings improvement project, subject to fast-tracking, and being brought back to council for approval by the second meeting in October?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, but that's just for, you're just amending four, but the motion to approve the item of I, or H?
Recommendation number four, yeah.
Recommendation four under H, what about the other rest of H?
Is there anything more to, oh, in terms of the design, then I'll approve number three, that'll add to that motion approval of number three as well, the designs and specifications. And to reject any and all bids, and to approve the change. Okay, all of them to go together, then I accept them all.
Okay, so we're, the motions to approve H was as amended on subsection four, to fast-track, okay?
To the fast-track.
Is there a second to that?
I second it.
Okay. Any discussion further? If, can that be so ordered, Mr. Attorney, or do we need a roll call?
As we're not spending any money, no roll, no roll calls required.
Okay, if I don't hear any objections, so ordered. Okay, thank you. Let's go to number I, or number, pardon me, letter I, on which is the adoption of the four statewide measures. And I had a request from Mr. Miley for a comment, and I don't know if that's on both items, but.
It's on six.
Okay, come on up.
Six?
On six or I?
I, I thought you wanted.
On six.
Proposition six.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Couple of visual aids here.
Okay, clock's ticking on ya.
I'm taking you down right after him, too.
I like the labeled Greg Grant there.
Okay.
This is Councilman.
He's got you on the road crew, Greg.
Okay.
Councilman Wyrick's painted red.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Okay, hit it. You got about two minutes left, yeah.
For the record, my name is Bill Miley. I live on North Signal Street. My family has lived here in Ojai for a half a century. On election day this November, California voters should protect their highways, roads, and bridges by voting a no on Proposition Six. Again, vote no on Proposition Six. You may know, this is an effort by an anti-tax group in San Diego and the Howard Jarvis Taxpayer Association to overturn a California state transportation funding law passed last year. On a two-third vote, this law will raise over $5 billion a year for highway, roads, and other transportation maintenance and repairs. According to Governor Brown and the State Legislative Analyst Office, we have a $58 billion backlog of state highway repair and bridge needs, $72 billions for county, city, road, bridge repair, and other structures. For years since 19, the year 2000, fuel and fuel taxes and vehicle license fee have been underfunding everything. Cars, trucks, and other vehicles need to pay their full cost. Otherwise, we drive on weakened bridges, highways, roads, and streets poorly maintained. Those against this funding want voters to vote yes to repeal the law, which added 12 cents per gallon excise tax in '17 and will add seven in 2020. They say it's unneeded and a bad burden on car owners. That's a bunch of baloney.
I said malarkey too, but I didn't. Let's look at the small increase in costs. Average person drives 15,000 miles per year,
25 miles per gallon, has 600 gallons of gasoline at 12 cents each, that's $72 a year for the whole year. The backers of Prop Six are saying roads should only be paid by, partly paid for by vehicle owners. Let someone else pay the rest. They say we already pay a lot with federal and state taxes when we buy gas. In 1993, California excise tax on gasoline stayed the same for 24 years. Federal tax has been the same, 18.4, and now the legislature raised it to 41.7. And guess what? President Trump in February said he's thinking of raising the federal tax from 18.4 to 25 cents, folks. Again, who pays for the highway roads? Vehicle owners should pay it all. The California Trucking Association was a strong backer of the new law. And my last plea.
Yeah, I'll give you a little extra time, Bill. It's a very important thing you're bringing to everyone's attention.
Please, when voting, when voting, please remember that our state has a backlog of $130 billion for repair and replacement of projects for the transportation system, all because we haven't been paying away for the last 24 years. This is 58 billion for state and 72 billion for county and city. All will benefit. As an example, our own city, Ojai, it expects to receive $2 million over 10 years for road maintenance. Wow. Please vote no on Prop Six. That's no on Prop Six.
A big no, yeah.
To keep our funding, to fix our roadways, and to save our cars and our lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
That's Greg Grant. This is what they just overturned. Greg is gonna be looking for potholes. City manager's gonna be filling it.
Okay, yeah.
This is from right here, because we don't have to worry about speed anymore, because the potholes slow everybody down.
Okay, yeah. It's a different approach to traffic calming, okay. Yeah, thank you, Bill, and that's really an important, what he's, he's done our work for us as far as the message to the community. I'm not quite sure what is in the minds of the people who, other than politics, but opposing this, this road tax. If you go back and compare, you know, present value of dollars and what it will buy to maintain the roads plus the backlog, we are not taking care of our roads, and with the higher efficiency of cars, the, you know, better mileage, there's less and less money being collected. This is a bargain and something that's way past due. So, anyway, thanks for highlighting it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just one quick fact that I wanted to put out, this was in the staff report, but if it is repealed, the city of Ohio will be looking at losing over $2 million of, of gas tax funding that would come in to be able to support our local roads. So that's a large amount of money that would be lost by the city.
Okay, hope everyone at home heard that. $2 million, just here locally, would be lost. And, and that's not even to address the, the value that public works projects have to the economy, creating jobs and moving money through the local area. So, anyway, I think it's a good thing, and I think the California voters will support that by opposing it. Okay, motion for?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. No objection, okay. The consent agenda is complete. We are now at public hearing. Introduction of an ordinance to amend the cultural and historic preservation ordinance, and I see Luke is back with us. Great to see you, Luke.
Thank you. Nice to be back, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. And I think I did this in late May, so I kind of feel like I'm picking up where I left off before I left.
Deja vu all over again, right?
Though it looks like there were a few comments since last time. In any event, what's before you, I believe this has been worked on for about two years or so, and it would be amendments to the historic preservation ordinance. This came before the council on May 22 and the Historic Preservation Commission on April 12. The version of the ordinance, and I'm looking at, I know there's a clean version and a redline version, I'm looking at the Attachment B, which is the redline version, which kind of indicates what the changes would be to the existing ordinance. The version there in Attachment B is essentially the recommendation from the Historic Preservation Commission from April 12 to the city council. As I said earlier, I know there have been some comments and discussions since that time on the ordinance, so I'm gonna try and be brief, assuming that there's gonna be a lot of discussion and questions to follow up. But as I see, not having worked on this for the full two years, the main issues with this ordinance, or what this ordinance is doing, is it's really, it's defining what are character-defining elements of historic landmarks, which is really the key. Those things are telling you why is something a landmark, why is it significant, what architectural features, for instance, make it significant that if a building didn't have those, it wouldn't possess the significance. So, there's definitions of terms like that in the ordinance, and also process changes, where you get into on page two on Attachment B, if you want to follow along with the ordinance, the definitions of what is a major work permit, a minor work permit, and ordinary repair and maintenance. This sort of defines your process. This all pertains to city landmarks, and a major work permit, which is what's in place today, those are permits that would need to be issued by the historic preservation, really for any alteration or construction removal on a city-designated landmark. So you're really looking at any exterior changes on those, or structures within a historic district would require that permit to be approved by the Historic Preservation Commission. What the ordinance is also doing is creates a category of a minor work permit, which would be approvable by the Community Development Director, or if the director felt like it should go directly to the HPC, that permit could go there. And a minor work permit, again, pertains to landmarks, but is focusing on things like an interior alteration, which is, you know, obviously, there's no exterior change to a building, or exterior alterations of non-character-defining elements, essentially work that would be proposed to a landmark that would not result in a significant change. An example could be something on the rear of a building that couldn't be seen. I know also, one of the phrases that will probably be getting discussed tonight is that the standard right now for needing a permit is that these things would need to be visible from a public right-of-way. So that is a term that is used a lot in historic preservation or visually sensitive areas, is can a change be seen from a public right-of-way? It is referenced in things like the National Park Service Secretary of Interior Standards, which is probably the most influential document as how you look at historic resources, but it's not a criteria of that document. It could be a criteria, should the city want to use that, you could adopt that, but it is not something that's a hard and fast rule, that proposed changes to buildings or landmarks need to be visible from a public right-of-way. All of these permits, again, the minor work permit or the major work permit are appealable to the city council, so there is opportunity throughout the process, again, for those interested to weigh in on these permits. And, again, in the staff report, there are also several other attachments of comments that have been received from the State Office of Historic Preservation, which I believe those came in in late August. Councilmember Wyrick, I know, has had comments on this that are included in the staff report, and I want to get the last name right, but I know our newest historic, Elise DePoyt, has also got some comments as well, I believe, that date from August 2, on suggested changes. And a lot of these are very detailed, because again, we're talking about an ordinance, it's 16 pages long, there's a lot of changes, so to try to follow along with those, I'm assuming that's gonna be part of our discussion tonight. But, again, the starting point is really the Historic Preservation Commission's recommendation in April. That's how the ordinance reads right now, that's before you, and that is really what is being recommended for approval tonight. So, with that, that concludes my staff report, and you can let the discussion begin.
Question?
Not a question, it's just, I think I'd like to make a somewhat of a motion. Could we put together mayor and ad hoc committee to review this? I'd like to see something like the people that made comments, maybe Elise, maybe Councilman Wyrick, maybe Brian, and maybe Luke, and have them review this one more time, and actually come back to us from the ad hoc committee with the, with a more defined recommendation.
Could we add Craig Walker? He said he was willing to do that.
Fine, I'd be willing to add Craig to that list, but I think it'd be much faster if we did that, and, and we maybe gave them a date certain to come back.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
But what about the public?
We have public comment before we go. I have two cards. Elise, would you like to come?
Just for the record, I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Here again. Just for the record, the, the secretary of the interior standards say that it's conspicuous on the site or from the public right-of-way, not just public right-of-way by itself. So, and I was, I was basically gonna come to ask for the same thing of ad hoc committee. I myself spent many more hours going through the ordinance again and trying to understand all the details of it, and I know others have, because Craig's submitted some more comments, and I've actually wrote up some more comments trying to understand it, and it's like, I feel like we're trying to, like we're scholars trying to understand the, some ancient texts or something. It's, it's really, needs to get straightened out so it's understandable. I just, here's a few more comments. Can add to the others.
All right.
Thank you.
Should I just leave?
We can pass them, we can pass them.
You leave them with the clerk, and we'll just pass them around, fine. Thank you, Elise.
Okay, now that you're almost done.
Okay, we have other speaker card. Brian, would you, or, pardon me, are you, are you done, Elise?
Yeah, I'm done.
You're done, okay. I mean, you're finished, pardon.
Thank you.
Okay. Brian, you're up.
These are extra copies of each, pages of information that I emailed to each council member today.
You guys are making the case, aren't you?
Well, I'm just trying to clarify a question. So, one of the things you'll see in there are 13 references that go to the National Park Service Secretary of Interior Standards, in fact, including the one that Elise just listed for you, but did not give you a reference. Again, you'll see the links in there, you'll see the information that goes with each of those links, the text, so you don't have to look them up and go forward. So I'm standing here tonight as the chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. I'm here in support of the decision that was made by the Historic Preservation Commission after almost four years. This process started after the meeting we had with the Chicago lawyers in December of 2014, so we've been talking about this since then. So again, my position is to support the commission in the vote that they took, in all the deliberations they took, the many meetings that we had, and to go forward and to try to get this done. I'm not expressing my opinions, I'm not expressing the opinions of others. So again, I talked with Luke today. As I said, I was delaying giving that letter to you because I wanted to talk with Luke beforehand. We talked about the phrase, visible from the public right-of-way. I think you heard him just say that that's a common term that's used, and he can answer any questions on that. Also, our terms were put together by city attorney Matt Summers. In the meeting that we held on, on May, the question came up about a dollhouse on a property, would it have to go before the HPC? I said, no, it's not within, visible from the public right-of-way. I confirmed with city attorney Matt Summers, and he acknowledged that that was correct. So again, 13, 13 links from the National Park Service, the Secretary of Interior Standards in here, highlighted 36 references talking about visibility in one term or another within that document. A couple of things that I want to point out that are important to me. One of them is, was in section 4-8.16, paragraph 16, this was Councilman Wyrick's number 32 comment, that was whether there was a need for a concept review. I completely think there was a need for a concept review. We had one, one concept review come before us in the eight years I've been hanging around the HPC. That gentleman came with his detailed concept that had been prepared for the planning commission and went through it with us that night. We asked questions, he answered them completely for us, and he left with our congratulations on his project, fairly major project in a fairly significant landmark area. The other part is, and this also came up in the discussion, is that the HPC has requested numerous times that it be, that any historic resource reports be run by the Historic Preservation Commission as kind of a vetting approach. That was discussed in our meeting. Unfortunately, it did not make it into the comments, but again, I want to put that forward, that. And I've gone to planning commission meetings, and when I see that a historical report is present, just so I can at least hear a little bit about what's going on, request a copy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian.
I just have one question. What do you, what is your thoughts on, what are your thoughts with regard to the motion that's before us, that we ought to continue it to have another committee take a look at it?
So, as I said, the Historic Preservation Commission has met on this multiple times, individually, multiple times with the council, and probably the three meetings, four meetings, the three meetings that we've had since then, so we've talked about this issue with you. We have been open to public comment throughout the whole process. We have had people come and not come. All of a sudden, at the last meeting that we hold, that we have Community Development Director Connolly here, and also city attorney Matt Summers at, we heard, again, more public comment. That was discussed amongst the four commissioners that we had that night. One was out with the death of the family, I can't remember what the other one was. And then we discussed it in depth, having kind of a wrap-up to all the years we had done. We turned it over to city attorney Matt Summers to take our counsel, to then incorporate that into the document that was going to be submitted to the county, to the city, and we felt like we had done our efforts, our best efforts, our intelligent, plain, clear language efforts to get that information to you. And I have now, this is the fourth meeting I've actually been to, we all know that, and being here and trying to answer questions that, that might come up. Thank you.
Could you, could you give this to someone in the audience, Tom, Tom Francis?
Okay, I don't have any other further cards for?
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a substitute motion to approve the proposed amendments to Historic Preservation Ordinance as proposed in the staff report.
Okay, that's a substitute motion. Is there a second to that? Okay, I'll second it. So we have a motion, moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, my bottom line is, I don't think council should ever adopt anything that it doesn't fully understand, including the intended and unintended consequences, and I just don't think the council has that level of understanding to perceive as something this complicated with as much possible impact, and with some major issues still to be debated.
Okay, other comments or questions?
I have one comment, Mayor.
Randy?
It seems like every time we look at this, we find something else. Every time that there's an opportunity to review, we find something that either wasn't real clear or something that just needed more clarity. That's why I'm not opposed to having one more look at it. Don't take it to the full commission, take it to an ad hoc committee. Give them three months to do it, or two months to do it, or as quick as they can, but get it back to us, and just give it one more clear review, and bring it back with one final consensus. I would like, also, there's a lot of questions where you've, there's a lot of things where you've changed things. I'd like to know why you changed them and what's the benefit to the change, and there's nothing in here that gives me that. It just says, change it to this, change it to that, and there's a lot of changes in this. So, that might be something that you also provide, is a list of all the changes that you have made, and give us the pluses and minuses of them, and why you feel that they need to be changed. That's what I'm saying, to me, one more review doesn't.
Okay. That sounds like it.
That sounds like it goes back to the Historic Preservation Commission, the drafter of the ordinance, for clarification, not an ad hoc committee.
Well, my argument against that is that the planning commission advises the council. And it's up to the council to decide how it wants to proceed with a final review. And I just think that it's appropriate to, I mean, I'm volunteering my time, but I think a member of the council ought to be looking at this in terms of reporting back to council.
You meant to say historic commission?
Yes, historic commission. I'm sorry.
Well, I think if we adopt it as it's proposed, it's been well-vetted, it's been talked about for two or three years, if we have little tweaks we have to make to it, it can always come back. So my motion stands.
Okay, yeah. I'm inclined to agree with Paul, either to refer it back to the Historic Preservation Commission or to do as Paul suggests and that we move forward. And, you know, the, one of the things that's sort of frustrating both to the public as well as to all of us, is that we keep trying to perfect something rather than, you know, reach a decision and then be willing to come back when there, if there are, you know, things that need to be improved on. That's the, I mean, it's a continuing process. We could have done it several times in four years. I think that we're at a stage where I'm not quite sure what an ad hoc committee composed of people. The reason we have a Historic Preservation Commission is to advise the council. And now we're be creating some kind of, you know, third level or something, or intermediate level. So I would be inclined to approve this and then come back with further amendments if it's believed to be somehow weakened or strengthened or whatever, whatever the concerns. I haven't seen what the flaws are and I don't know that I would ever fully understand it. I think that's what the people that study this and administer it, so.
Well, I'm inclined to have the ad hoc committee look at it. I don't think it can hurt. I do think we need some kind of time certain so it doesn't go on and on. But the people on the committee, if we agree to it, are, Elise and Craig Walker have a long history on the history of Ojai. And I would like, I think it's better to be safe than sorry and get it as right as possible rather than having to do amendments. It's not an urgent, I mean, it's not time, it's not like an emergency. We can, we can take a little more, just a little more time after two years. Yeah.
Further comments here?
No.
The chairman of the commission seems to want to add a little something, so if there's no objection, let's hear from Brian.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from Brian.
Okay. So, let me just share the burden a little bit, having done this for almost four years, having to be in, as I said, in multiple commission meetings, multiple meetings. We have, on your right, the person who put the terms together, Matt Summers. Matt, and I've congratulated in previous meetings how I was very grateful for all of the work he did in the background to put that together. Why were there changes? Because in any four-year process, there's going to be changes. New people come on. We got this to the point where we had it by unanimous vote, voted to send it to council. It was only at the very last meeting, after all those years, that the folks that are coming brought it forth. I think their, you know, I'm just, that's why we have a Historic Preservation Commission, is to make a recommendation to the city council. I don't think it's in our purview to work four years and then have what we've deliberated over four years be set aside and turned over to a committee, even people that I highly respect such as Craig Walker and Elise DePoyt, who actually now is a member of the Historic Preservation Commission.
I was going to ask, she is a member now?
She is now. She has not been seated yet because we didn't have a meeting in September.
Okay.
But again, again, if you have questions, as I pointed to our colleague on the left, we have the Community Development Director who has extensive experience in doing this in other locations. We have your city attorney on your right who actually put the terms together for us.
It wasn't one of the reasons this was delayed was because Luke was absent.
We did.
And, I mean, I don't know all the reasons that Elise and Craig and others waited till the last meeting to weigh in. But weigh in they did.
And also, they came to the second council meeting. Only I came to the first council meeting because I try to always be here to answer questions. I'm sorry.
Okay, well, it's the council's pleasure.
We have a substitute motion to vote on, so.
Thank you. I'd like you to call the question.
Okay, the question's been called for. Call the roll.
Mayor Protem Haney?
No.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
No.
Councilmember Wierich?
No.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes. Motion fails. Okay, now we have the original motion. The original motion, the main motion, is to refer this to an ad hoc committee and have we clearly defined who is on that?
I think we need to, I think we need to, we need to define who's on it. We have to define when, what they're going to do and we have to define when they have to come back.
Okay. Bill or Randy?
You were the maker of the motion.
Yeah, so where's my, what do I do with my list? I said Elise is the new commission member. Brian, I request that you be on it. Someone suggested Craig Walker, I agree with that. Councilman Wierich has asked to be on it.
And Luke.
And Luke. So that would be five members.
Can I ask for one more commissioner from the, that actually was involved in the four years? Right now we have me.
We had a quorum problem, maybe.
Yeah.
Well, we have a representation problem is what I see.
There's two.
Okay, guys, through the chair.
So this is my, so this is my motion, sir. So that's what I'm, that's what I'm recommending, is those five. As far as the, as far as the mission, is that what you want clarity on, Paul? Again, would be to review this, this proposed ordinance. Come back with any additional recommendations that they see fit. Again, my request was on any of the changes that they give us a clear understanding as to why the change is necessary, even if it's two words. And as far as the date certain, I'm not opposed to three months. What are we, in October? September, October, November, December? We could come back to the second meeting in January if that works for all.
Can it be sooner? Or it can be sooner?
And it can be sooner.
Yeah.
But I know December's going to be a short.
Yeah, but maybe they can get it done.
That's fine.
Because, you know, it may be.
Okay, we're debating, haven't even got the things on the table yet.
So, that would be my motion.
Okay, the number, who are the members or recommended members? Elise, Greg, Bill, Brian, and who else?
And Luke.
And Luke's staff, so I think Luke can be a non-voting member of it, his staff, and we could have one more member from the historic.
Craig, right?
Yeah. The, this is, this is just my experience after three years on cultural resources and the number of people that we had on that body and the length of time. I just believe shorter, the smaller the group, the quicker the response.
Okay, well, I'm going to, let's.
I, and I'm just opposed to it. We have a Historic Preservation Commission that has spent four years doing it. If you want somebody to look at it, send it back to the Historic Preservation Commission. We're now getting a committee to review a committee.
Okay, but what I'm understanding is whether this is an amendment to the motion or a clarification of your original motion, this is what you're asking for?
Right, that's what I'm asking for.
Do you object to having one, I know that you say that smaller the better, but we talked about five, we really actually have four, as far as the citizen participation in this, with one member of the city council? I would like to amend your motion to include a member from the Historic Preservation Commission yet to be named, I don't know who it would be that had the four years' experience, but...
Yeah, my first choice would be Darlin McCreedy.
Okay, then that's, that's my motion then.
That's fine. That's fine, Brian.
But isn't, so isn't ad hoc committee allowed to have three commissioners?
Well, yeah, but it's being defined by, Randy defined it to have five people, instead of not coming only from the commission. You could have more, but we're not trying to keep expanding this, we're just trying to get some balance to it, I think.
No, there's, there's.
And Randy?
Oh, now we're going to have three commissioners on there, though.
It's a seven-member commission, three is less than a quorum.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
I'd say three is less than the quorum.
Okay.
On a seven, on a seven-member.
Correct.
Great, I forgot.
Okay. You have no objection with that? Okay, and is it really take three months to do this after all this time?
I'm giving them till January. If they can come back quicker, let them come back.
Yeah.
But they have that time, but let's.
Yes.
Try to do it quicker.
Let's try to do it quicker. And I understand your frustration completely. I just want to be safe.
Do we, do we have a meeting in, at the end of November, or is that?
Yes, we do. Yes, yes, that's still on the calendar. It falls after the Thanksgiving holiday.
Would that be acceptable?
I would like to see it get done this year.
Okay, so the deadline is November, the second meeting in November. And we've identified the membership and the mission is to?
Prove it.
If I can complicate things just a moment of, if we want to put it on for the November 27th meeting, normally we are wrapping up those staff reports in the second week of November. So in order to make that deadline of the November 27th meeting, I would want council to give the deadline to the committee of sometime in early November.
Okay, is that?
Yeah, that's a good compromise.
Okay.
Okay, so are we all sort of clear on this? And one no vote?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, if there's no further debate, we'll roll call.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Wierich?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Excellent, okay, thank you.
Luke, you're going to be around, right?
Yes, you will.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, the next topic is density bonus ordinance. Can we start that with Luke? We're working him hard to start with.
Eight o'clock. Time's certain, public comment is coming.
Yeah, I know. Okay, we'll take the staff report before we open the hearing. Luke, you're up.
Good evening again.
Maybe for the benefit of the audience, at eight o'clock, we are going to go to public comment, but we'll take the staff report and then after public comment, we'll open the hearing on this item, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. This will be a brief oral staff report as well. I think as the written staff report indicates, this, the density bonus ordinance update is largely driven by a series of state bills that passed in September 2016 and became effective January 1, 2017. So essentially, these laws have been in place for over a year and a half now. This is really an exercise to get the city of Ojai's ordinance in sync with state law regarding density bonus and affordable housing. To try to just summarize what's in the staff report, a density bonus is really allowing an additional number of units or a greater density per acre than zoning would otherwise allow. And the reason that this would be allowed would be a provision of affordable housing or some guarantee for that. The state laws that went into effect in January 2017, the density bonus would apply to residential projects that would have to have a certain portion of very low, low or moderate income units, which is pretty typical with density bonus law for some time now. Though, these laws also added some other areas that you don't typically see. So in addition to income levels, you would now have populations that weren't typically addressed through density bonus or affordable housing laws. For instance, disabled veterans, transitional foster youth, and even homeless persons. So the modifications to the ordinance, based on these state laws, would now address those groups as well, which the current ordinance does not. Another aspect of the changes too is that mixed-use projects, so long as they had a residential component, would be subject to the density bonus ordinance. You wouldn't have to be exclusively a residential project to be able to qualify for the density bonus. And the density bonus though only applies to projects of five units or more. So while that's not a large project, it would be fairly substantial in the city of Ojai. We're not talking about things like single-family homes or even duplexes. You have to have a five-unit minimum to be eligible for the density bonus requirements. The ordinance also cites incentives or concessions that developers can ask for. This is largely a means of being able to reduce the construction costs to ensure that project is affordable. When you hear terms like incentives, that's typically excusing a developer from things like parking requirements, allowing less parking, or modifying development standards, say, allowing increased building height, things like that, that would typically require a variance or rezoning, but are a way of allowing more units, where they're affordable units, to go in on the site. So those are also aspects of the ordinance. Again, these are, and I'm sure city attorney would know better than I do on this, that this is largely to be consistent with the state law. There's nothing here that's proposed by staff or anyone that's outside of the requirements of state law. This is really to get Ojai in sync with that law, which in effect would trump Ojai anyhow. This is something that's been on the books, like I said, for over a year and a half. So with that, that concludes staff's report. Happy to answer any questions in conjunction with the city attorney.
If I could add one or two more comments and then take, of course, we'll take any questions. The other change in terms of matching the state law is the prior requirement was that density bonus projects maintain those units as affordable to the specified income level for 30 years. It is now 55 years, so that change is made in a few places. And that's de-disstricted affordable units for that time length, for that income level. Also, we've expressly defined.
Matt, is what you just said, does that say that they've extended the life of the affordability?
Yes, but only for projects after January 1, 2017. And of course, there's no projects right now in Ojai that came in under this law.
Thank you.
So any new project would have to protect those affordable units for 55 years, which is a useful element. We've also expressly defined the zones that are allowed. Previously was defined by reference to other portions of the code. And we've caught out expressly that the basic allowance for a residential multifamily density bonus project is the R2, R3, RS, VMU, and SPL overlay zone, SPL overlay district zones. And then further, a project that qualifies for an incentive or concession and so chooses to use, could use its incentive or concession to allow mixed-use residential added to a commercial zone, and that would be in the C1 or BP zones. That's been, that's based on the fact that the code allows, the state code allows a developer to seek an incentive or concession allowing mixed use in an otherwise non-mixed-use zone as an incentive or concession without the need for a zone change or general plan amendment. We wanted to clarify where that makes sense and where it doesn't make sense. So the recommendation is to limit that to the C1 and BP zones, if you're adding residential to existing commercial. And then the base allowance for residential multifamily is only in the existing zones that allow that, which is R2, R3, RS, VMU, and of course, the SPL overlay district zones, which is an overlay zone across some other zones. And I think everything else has been covered by Mr. Connolly.
Okay.
Mayor, I just had one, I'm sorry, Bill. I just had one question on the commercial side of it. Why did you say, what's your rationale behind not allowing this application in commercial zones?
Oh, I must have misspoke. Would be allowed.
Would be allowed.
Yes, but only if the, if you're placing a density bonus project in the C1 or BP zones, you would have to have, that would be the expenditure of your incentive or concession. Recall that developers receive at least one and possibly more incentives or concessions depending on the level of affordability units. In English, if you have a project that proposes 10% at very low income levels, then they're entitled to two incentives or concessions. So they could spend one on a height standard and the other could be spent on allowing it in the C1 zone, for example.
So, just make sure I understand, for the SPL overlay, we have some SPL overlay on C1 zones now. And so this would apply to any zone that has an SPL overlay on it?
Yes.
Okay. And an SPL overlay can be, is basically established as part of a council deliberation.
Okay. The SPL bill is for the benefit of the audience.
Go ahead.
Oh, the SPL is the special housing overlay zone that was adopted by the city council in 2013 as part of the housing element for the 2014 through 2020 period. And it provides that in a specified list of properties, about a half dozen, no, about a dozen, that notwithstanding the underlying base zoning, those properties can be used for affordable housing projects under various rules and regulations at a minimum density of 20 units per acre.
And the importance of that, and he'll correct me if I'm wrong, is that's part of our getting into compliance with our housing element.
That is exactly how the city has a certified housing element. That is exactly how the city has a certified housing element.
These overlays. And so, you know, if, for example, if some land we want to take out of the housing element availability, which I think we all know what we're talking about, by adding overlay zones, we can, that's one method of staying in compliance. It also allows us the flexibility for something that's not zoned multifamily to be able to proceed with that kind of project, but it would take council action, is my understanding, to put that zoning on there. Is that all, is that correct?
It would take council action to add the SPL overlays to a property that doesn't already have it, yes. And that'd be a separate item.
Yeah.
And it would also take planning commission review and approval, or recommendation, rather.
But as we stand here, nothing in here is beyond what we have to have for state law.
Correct. The only piece that is a little bit beyond is this calling out of specific zones.
I understand, but that.
But that's, the zones to be called out fit with state law.
Yeah. Well, you know, I have one other question, if you could indulge me. You know, there is a new state law with respect to a target population of teachers and educators with respect to repurposing a public land, school, surplus school lands. Is the, you know, not tonight, okay, but is it permissible to add target populations at the local level? Are you limited by state law to just these target populations in terms of the density bonus?
The density bonus statute allows the city to go further. So I think with appropriate parameters, you could adopt further target populations.
It's just something to consider, given the fact that there are some other state laws establishing target populations that are not included in this particular state law. I just bring that up for consideration.
Perhaps.
Not tonight.
Yeah, to be explored in a future item in depth.
Are there any further questions of staff?
I just have a question, Matt, in regard to these SPL overlay zones. If there's, if there's a piece of property that we currently don't have an overlay on, it can go back to council and we can create an overlay.
Definitely.
What if there's an overlay already on it and we want to take it off, but it can, but it's already in our housing element?
That can also be done. It would require amending both the housing element and the overlay zone ordinance to remove a property from the overlay zone. It would also require, if necessary, replacing the zone capacity to ensure that you still meet, we still meet the.
So you'd have to find another replacement property?
Yeah, we'd have to find another replacement property.
Okay.
As I recall, the sum total of units zoned for capacity under the housing overlay zone exceeded by some metric, by some amount, the number necessary to meet the state regional housing needs allocation number. So depending on what property was being pulled out, there may be room to pull it out without replacement. But at a minimum, any rezone, any downzone, that is, removing the SPL overlay zone would have to ensure that adequate capacity remains zoned for affordable housing at 20 units per acre minimum for, to meet the RENA standard.
Okay, and we'd have to amend the housing element to do that? Would that have to go to HPC?
HCD.
HCD, yes.
They'd have to go back there, they'd have to reapprove.
We'd have to move that through the state and have them recertify the amended housing element, yes.
Thank you.
And we're getting fairly close to the new housing element cycle. So depending on what was being sought to do, it may make sense to do that in that process. And by fairly close, I mean it's about a year and a half or so out.
Okay. Any further questions before we go to public comment?
Now, if we want to close this up?
No, we're going to continue the hearing. We have, actually haven't opened the hearing. Yeah, we'll continue the item and come back to it.
Okay.
And we, and I do have three cards for public comment. Okay, and these are on the non-scheduled items. Okay, so we are suspending our discussion of this particular ordinance and we'll open the hearing following public comment. And we have Kathy Bennett. Would you like to?
I will. You've probably all seen my, yeah.
What?
Like eight to 10 miles a day, just because I'm healthy, right? And my walking trail is the bike trail. And I just wanted to kind of just talk about those wonderful curb extensions that you are all starting, because I know you're going to get some trouble with it down the road. So I live at 212 East Chicaliptus. So I take out from my house, I head over to the bike trail, and I go left or right. Now, if you go down to Vons, it's a pretty straightforward way to cross. But downtown Ojai, there's just two tough spots. And they're really dangerous, especially with the students and the seniors. And that's Montgomery and that's Bryant Street. And so we got the new curb extensions coming out. And I am just a yahoo every time I'll drive by or walk by. So I just wanted to say that, first of all, they're magnificent. But secondly, the need for them is pretty strong, because especially Montgomery, that's turned into a real shortcut for people coming into the East End. So they come down over the Creek Road and then they cut onto Montgomery. And then they either cut off on Willow or they go down Ojai Avenue and go to the East End. And I'm one of those. But if you're a walker or a bicyclist, that's a pretty, pretty nasty spot. So the curb extensions will really add a lot to that. But I also think that your idea of beacons on that particular location, and also Bryant Street, which I'll talk about in a minute, would be really a nice add-on. I mean, I would never, ever imagine going out at night there. I mean, it's just really scary. But during the day, you have the seniors going over to the club, you have people coming in from Whispering Oaks, you have the kids, I mean, all the runners from Nordoff spinning down the street, and just, you know, people walking around. So Montgomery really needs some, it's kind of like a blind curve when you come in. People don't really know it's there. So those curb extensions are really going to make it a big noticeable spot. But then if you go down a little bit further and you get to Bryant Street, that has become a major obstacle course. And the reason is because they have that new little trailer park thing there. And in the summertime, there's kids spilling out in the street. And there's the Humane Society. And now you've got three dispensaries that the traffic is really zooming along. And so those curb extensions are just going to be magical. It's going to make it a lot safer. But it would also be nice to have another, some kind of a light going on. So that's all I really wanted to say.
Thank you.
I would like to say something in response. Are you aware this Saturday at 10:00 here in City Hall, we're going to be discussing the crosswalks on Ojai Avenue among, and, you know, infrastructure. It's, we have a, it's a, it's a public outreach meeting, and I would love for you to attend and say what you just said, or I'm going to ask Greg Grant to watch at 8:00 to hear what you said. Because, anyway, we're going to be discussing that Saturday morning, right? At 10, it's at 10:00.
I have one question for you.
How would we have known about that if I wouldn't have?
Oh, there's been an ad in the, big ad in the Ojai Valley News, and I've blogged it all over Facebook and the internet, and the city has advertised on their website.
You just need to friend Susa, you'll find out everything you need to know.
I have one question for you. What's your general opinion of the condition of the bike path?
It's just absolutely marvelous.
Clean?
Clean, safe. They have that little dirt trail along the side. I don't walk it anymore since you've had a rattlesnake occurrence in town.
Oh, that wasn't in town.
Oh, I thought it was.
The rattlesnake was in the river bottom.
Oh, well, maybe I could.
Yeah, somebody said they thought it was in town. No, it was in the river bottom.
Okay, so anyway, but it is really safe. Like at night now, I'm going to walk home, because my granddaughters have challenged me to 14,000 steps a day. That's a lot. So I'm going to walk home, but I won't go on the bike trail because it's just too hard to cross.
Well, again, one of the, one of the questions I asked is, is all the surface streets that when I pass that bike trail, when you can barely, there's not a crosswalk that's actually lined properly, you can barely see it. And I was just wondering if that impacts the walker or impacts the bike rider.
They go down, and the curb extensions have really helped.
Well, I'm just talking about across the asphalt in general. You know, there's no clear maintained line of delineation.
Okay.
But the crosswalks in general really need help, especially as we open more and more restaurants.
Yeah, they're going to happen.
Thank you, Kathy. We're still in public comment. I've got two more cards here. Jake, are you out there? Yeah, come on down.
Hello, everybody. My name's Jake Mall. I've been a resident of Ojai for my whole life, 28 years. I had two things that I wanted to bring to council's attention is, one of the things is, is that two weeks ago, there was an approval for a type 7 marijuana extraction license. And one of the things upon that is that why are we looking into doing extractions and all these other things when we're not even allowing like commercial growing activities? That was one of my questions on the subject.
Please, it's public comment.
But he's mistaken.
Through the chair, and let's hear from the public first, then we'll.
And another note is, is that since we're approving a type 7 license for marijuana extracts, I would like to address the council to also add a type 6 non-volatile solvent, because I'm a firm believer that everything that can be done with solvents can be done explosion-free, whether it be water and ice, or heat and pressure, or anything of that notion. But again, when it all comes down to it, is I'd like to bring council's notion that we definitely need to open up the commercial cannabis growing licenses as well.
Okay, under public comment, we were supposed to be listening to you, but not engaging.
This is my first time, please.
That's fine, you know.
Trying to figure it all out. But yeah, like, I would like to propose to at least, very least, add the type 6 license to the marijuana legislation that was approved two weeks ago. And then I would like to further explore the option of doing commercial cannabis growing in Ojai, because if we're going to have an extraction lab, we definitely need to have some place to source that material from the valley itself.
Okay.
That kind of puts my comments to.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a clarification?
You may.
Okay. Nothing was approved.
Okay.
We had a discussion, and there is going to be, and correct me if I'm saying, mischaracterizing, there will be an ordinance brought back. And when it's on the agenda, you can come and, and make public, you know, make comment on the item. And so just to assure you that nothing, we don't approve things that fast.
Okay.
Yeah.
Like I said, it's my first time. I'm unsure on how things go.
You're doing fine, Jake.
I just want to come and conduct myself properly and make things that I feel need to be known, known to council, so.
Okay, and what, the clarification was, is that they will, they're drafting an ordinance of some sort, and when it comes back, that would be a good time to come down and participate, because all ordinances require a public hearing and to hear from the.
I was trying to get it on the draft before.
Very good.
Thank you, guys.
We appreciate that, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, very quickly, if I could, the direction that we received from the council at the last meeting was to bring back an ordinance for council's consideration that would also include allowing the type 6 processing as well as the type 7. So just want to clarify that, thank you.
And you're aware of the city website? That if you're not, the city manager can give you the information so that you can keep track of the topic, because when it comes back, you'll want to be down for the, for the public hearing, okay? Lenny?
Leonard Clay, 412 North Fulton Street. Last Friday evening, I was here in council chambers for the reception, celebrating the mentor-mentee program from the Arts Commission. I am, I went to that event in the, in the matter of full disclosure, because my wife, Linda Harmon, is a member of the Arts Commission. But I am here because I was just so impressed with the presentation and wanted to thank the council for supporting the arts. Four artists, four Ojai artists are matched with four Ojai students for a 50-hour summer program, an internship program. The art, the four students produced, as one student's work is up on top here, one is on the walls in the back, and the other two are down the hall closer to the main entrance that the public uses to access City Hall. So not only did we get to see the art, but the kids and the mentors explained how it was done, what the process was for each piece, and it was quite fascinating. And the best part was not only were the students really excited about the opportunity that they were given, but each of the artists was equally excited about how much they learned from working with the students. So it's a fabulous program, and I just wanted to thank you for continuing to support it.
Thank you, Lenny.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all the cards we have. So public comment is now closed. We go back to the ordinance concerning density bonuses. We've heard from staff, we've asked the questions, so I guess it's time to open the hearing. So the public hearing is now open. Do we have any cards? I haven't seen any.
No.
Okay, we, we have no cards, so in that case, I guess we can close the public hearing. And now the council should deliberate. What is your pleasure?
Well, I'm going to go ahead and move approval, because my understanding is this is, this right here is basically getting into compliance with state law.
I agree. I second it. Okay, we got a second from Susa. Yeah, now, when they said, when Luke, you said largely, you were giving a little wiggle room for the issue of the BP and the commercial zones are a little different than the state? Is that, when anybody says largely, that doesn't mean all of it?
Yeah, that actually came from me, in terms of, the state law allows the, doesn't dictate what zones. The city can just be silent on zones, and then it's up to assessing project by project whether a zone permits multifamily, or whether, and whether a zone, if based commercial permits as an incentive or concession, including mixed use. We, we being me and staff, recommend that the council define expressly the zones in order to shortcut some of that fight as a project comes forward. The choice of zones that were included were based on the existing zoning table and what uses are allowed in those zones.
Okay.
And it's worth pointing out that for any given project in the C1 or BP zones that comes forward and says, we'd like to have affordable housing mixed-use project in that zone with X units affordable, the council could, or planning commission, could still decline it if they make certain findings, including that in the mixed-use context, the, I'm looking for the exact language, the inclusion of mixed use would not be compatible with the, would not be compatible with and reduce the cost of the residential project. In other words, if you found that it would be inappropriate for a particular site with the right facts, it could still be denied.
Okay.
But that's the one piece that's beyond the pure state law.
So the density bonus is going to apply to commercial and business professional and all other ways. It's just cleaning up the ordinance, as Bill said, okay? So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Mayor Protamheini?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrek?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Excuse me for jumping in. I think everybody remaining in the audience is for the discussion on homelessness. So I don't know if the council would consider moving that item up in front of the water coordinator position, just so. So instead of taking item number four first, if council's permission, we could take five?
Number five is the homelessness, correct.
Okay, do we have any speakers' card?
No.
Does anybody want to speak on this?
Susa, through the chair, please. I know you're an engaging person who like to include everyone, but include me too, okay?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Is that, without any speaker cards, is there any reason to change the order? I mean, what's the council's pleasure? Would you like to change the order?
I would just leave it in the order it is.
Yeah, I think we're moving forward.
Okay, so we'll move through and we'll get to as quickly as we can. The proposal for city water coordinator, this, Mr. McLaren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So again, just to recap, the council had considered this back at their meeting on June 26th, and it endorsed in principle the creation of the position, and had tasked your city manager to come back with the specific tasks that the position could be accomplished, look at possible funding sources, and whether it could be implemented through a consultant contract. I did meet with, as follow-up, with Mayor Protamheini and Councilmember Wyrek, and we had identified a number of questions, which I've now provided some answers to. So I'll try to go through those quickly. Number one, one of the questions, whether we could do this as a sole source, in other words, do we have to bid out this work? And the short answer is no, we do not need to bid that work out. It's less than $25,000. It's not a public works project. We would be basically procuring professional services, so we could do that as a, as a sole source contract. professional services, so we could do that as a, as a sole source contract. In my recommendation, I'm suggesting that we do a request for qualifications, just to ensure that we can get the best possible consultant for the city. And then kind of a follow-up question to that is whether to advertise for proposals, using request for proposals, or request for qualifications. And again, same answer, I'm recommending that we issue a request for qualifications. Next question was whether, how to best fund the position, and whether grants are available, and if it can be self-funded. I am recommending that we try to obtain grant funds for this position, I'll talk a little bit more about the current effort on that right, that's going on right now. So again, I'm not recommending that we try to pull any money out of this year's budget to fund this position, certainly that's an alternative that the council could consider. You could amend your budget for the fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, or, or in some future budget as well, if you wanted to appropriate general fund monies for this. The other question was whether that the position could actually be tasked with identifying and seeking grants that could help fund the position, that absolutely can, and I think should be included as part of the job description and the job duties. This next question's a little bit more complicated, which is whether or not to try to seek use of proposition two eighteen funds for a position. We do know that the county of Los Angeles is contemplating going through that route. Both your city attorney and I do not recommend trying to go that route at this time. We think that would likely be subject to legal challenges, a lot of cost involved, simply to get it approved, you know, to get it before the electorate and get it approved. And then again, we feel that that would likely be subject to legal challenge. That may be a very viable way to fund positions down the road, but we don't think Ojai should be one of the first test cases on that. We'd rather see what happens with the county of Los Angeles in that area. So, that's the short answer on that. And then, what position, what role should it play in terms of coordination with local agencies? Obviously, I think everybody agrees that that's a key part of this position, is having them out there, you know, feet on the ground, in terms of coordinating, interacting with other agencies, getting that information, making sure that Ojai has a seat at the table and is up to date as, you know, as, as much as possible in real time on these, on these issues. Next question was whether or not we could coordinate or implement, or coordinate the efforts with the Sierra Water Progressive, which is under contract right now for the city, to do a water study for recharge and, and conservation. And yes, that position can, and I believe absolutely should coordinate with the efforts of Sierra Water Progressive. And then also provided a list of proposed qualifications and job duties for the position. If you have to answer any, any questions on the specifics of those, that has not changed significantly from the original job descriptions that were proposed for the position, so those look, should look rather familiar to you. In terms of compensation for the position, we think based on the qualifications, what we're asking for, that the target budget be set in the range of seventy to eighty-five thousand dollars. Let me, let me go back a little bit to talk about the grant funding. So, the city, through Sierra Water, did put in, as, as part of a multi-agency grant application, earlier this month, to the Wildlife Conservation Board. And in that grant proposal, there has been identified eighty-three thousand dollars in funding that could be provided specifically to a city water coordinator position. My recommendation, my hope, would be to wait and see the results on that grant. I believe we're gonna hear the, the words on that in February of twenty-nineteen, which is a bit of a time off. But at, at that point, if we're successful in that planning grant, again, we could apply those monies towards a water coordinator position. So my recommendation would be if, if council is acceptable with going this route, that we issue a request for qualifications now, so we can get a list of qualified consultants, we can bring that back to the council, see if there's a preference there. And then we, I would recommend that we wait and see if we're successful through the WCB grant. If you have to answer any questions.
Mayor? Okay, have a question?
Yes. On the qualifications, why are we, why would we be limiting the proposed qualification, second bullet, to public agency experience or the equivalent? Really, we're just looking for water agency experience, does it necessarily have to be public experience?
Well, I, I don't, I don't necessarily, and that's why, you know, in the HR world, we always put in that little, those tag words of, or the equivalent.
I understand.
Because certainly somebody could have all that requisite knowledge from working in the private industry. I think we just wanna make sure that whoever is hired is familiar with the rules and the regulations that public agencies have to follow.
A consultant to a private group that's had years of experience with public agencies would be just as knowledgeable.
Absolutely.
I just don't wanna be overly limiting.
Sure.
And I just wonder about striking the word "public" in the qualification, I'm just asking, what, what you thought of that, so.
I don't have a problem with that.
And, and the other comment I had was, real quick, I like the idea, rather than water coordinator, I like the title Water Resources Coordinator better than water coordinator, just, just my personal preference, just.
I like that too.
Appetite elsewhere to, from the rest of council on that. And then the other bullet on proposed qualifications, it's, it's really focused on, in terms of specifics, knowledge of demand side, water conservation-related, outdoor conservation programs. I would like us to consider another bullet, of knowledge of water resources programs in general, both water supply and water demand side programs. Maybe that's a little iterative and redundant.
Where are we?
Well, you see, in the proposed qualifications, page three of five?
Yeah.
The "knowledge of" is limited to demand-side conservation programs. And I think we're looking for somebody with, you know, potential experience, both on the water supply side and demand side. And I just, you know, words to that effect, my personal preference.
Understood.
Other questions? Other comments? Well, I have a couple.
I'm, I'm thinking, go ahead.
Would you like to say?
No, I'm thinking, I'm thinking.
It seems, this is a, kind of a, I know we need, everybody's nervous about water and what we're gonna do, and there are water resource coordinators already working in the valley through Casitas Municipal Water District, and the Watershed Protection Agency, and that doesn't mean we can't use more. We even have some people that live here, right in the city of Ojai, that are working with the groundwater basin in the Ventura River. To be creating a position for three to five years, without the funding source yet secured, if I understood, the city manager's saying, you were saying that, that we, we could proceed with this, but it would be conditioned upon obtaining the funding, getting a grant approval?
That's my recommendation, correct?
Yeah, if there, if there's money out there specifically for this purpose, you know, great, we can take advantage of it. If it competes with the salaries for our own employees, and having the city of Ojai be the basis of the funding, I think that that's quite a burden for us to take on. The description of what I see here, I think is a fairly rare, rare bird, if you should excuse the description. There aren't a lot of people who know how to do this, and I know we, I know of one who loves our valley and who periodically visits here, I don't know if they're available or not, but it would just seem like we'd start out with finding out if we can get three to five years' worth of funding. And I, and if I understand this, the request for qualification would be sort of an exploratory effort, just to find out.
Correct.
How many rare birds there are, and, or if the one that we're aware of is available. Is that what I'm reading?
Yes, correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, I think the idea, if we can get with what Sierra seems to think that we, we might be able to get the funding, I, I don't necessarily think that we should be going forward with a three to five-year position outside our budget, except through the grant.
I would, I would agree.
So I would support a motion like this, with grant funding as the condition precedent to going forward. Otherwise, I think we'd need to review it at budget time in the spring. So, anyway, those are my thoughts. Susan, did you?
So we're not actually, we're exploring, but we're not actually gonna be interviewing, because, we're not actually going, because we don't know if we have the funding. Is that correct?
Sounds like parallel tracks, that we would be pursuing the funding, and exploring in advance who might be out there, who could do it in order to save time.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I'm not sure why the council would necessarily be selecting the person, it seems like that would be a, a staff process and recommend to the council, short of some objection to the, the staff's recommendation, I would think that, this is...
That was my thought, actually.
First of all, I'm confused as to whether or not you'd actually be advertising for the position, or you're putting an RFP out for consultant.
Yeah.
So, it sounded to me like you're looking for doing the RFP for the consultant, to see if any consultants are out there. That would be an independent contractor.
Right.
Not an employee of the city.
That's correct.
And we'd still need funding for that.
Correct.
Or on another, if, I, I think it should be an employee of the city, so long as we have the funding, rather than a, than a consultant. But I have no objection to going out and seeing if there's consultants out there for it.
This may not actually be what you'd consider to be, the, the kind of skills I think you need for this, are people who not only understand the, the technical aspects, but have the skills for inter-agency coordination. And that wouldn't necessarily be, you know, to get somebody to work for us up here in the little Ojai, full-time, would have a lot of payroll tax and other things involved. It would seem like maybe our best chance is to get a specialist who might share their experience and their time between more than one agency.
Yeah, and again, it's, it, it might be difficult to craft that as a, as a full-time, forty-hour-a-week position, and, and then, and then you're, if you're reducing hours or reducing benefits, now trying to get somebody to take that job is gonna be even that much more difficult. So, yeah, we thought that the consultant model was a, was a better fit.
If we can find one, I guess.
Right.
Yeah, so, okay, well, Susan?
No, no, I just wondered what Randy thinks.
So, so my thoughts are, first of all, Steve, great job.
Thank you.
You did a nice job preparing this. I'm in, I'm kind of in agreement, Mayor, with you regarding the funding source. As much as I would like to get this started tomorrow, I recognize the, the need to wait. I'd like to see it funded through the grant process, I think it's probably a better, better way of funding it. So I can wait until, until that date is certain, even if, even if it's five, six months out, okay? And then doing the RFQ, I think is probably the most important thing. Since we had this discussion, I've had four people call me personally, asking to interview for the position. And I said that we hadn't set it up yet, so, but when we do, I'd contact them. So, there's four or five people that I know of that are interested in, in doing this, so.
Great.
Well, definitely would wanna send them the RFQ, then.
The only, the only last question I have, Steve, is who's, who's the, who do you see the position reporting to? Is it gonna be, obviously, if, if it's a consultant, it's gonna direct, it's gonna report to you?
They would report, the, the day-to-day managing of their activities, just like with any consultant, would, should be managed by the city manager's office. However, how you want that position to interact with the city council, the frequency of the reports, that's certainly something that the, that the council should give some input on.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll move to recommend item number, or move for item number three under the recommendations.
Were there no public comment cards? Just the city attorney reminded me. Okay, thank you.
Nope.
That includes my suggestions.
Okay, so you have a motion to proceed with the RFQ, to explore.
That's correct.
To explore what's out there, do you have a second?
Inclusive of my suggestions, yes, second. I think that was inclusive of my suggestions?
Correct.
Yeah, second.
Your, your suggestions?
Suggestions.
What was your suggestion?
The suggestions, the title be reported.
Oh, yeah, okay, fine, yeah.
And to take out the word "public" from the agency experience, which I concur with.
And the other thing about knowledge of supply and...
Any discussion on that motion? If not?
I'll second it.
Okay, it moved, seconded, so ordered. Staff is directed to pursue that. And you're already working on the, the grant funding, is that right, through Sierra?
That, that's already been submitted. That was submitted the early part of this month, and I believe we'll hear about that in February, let me double-check that, though.
Good, okay. Anything else on this item, Steve?
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, let's go to number five, memorandum of understanding on Ventura Countywide homeless and resolution authorizing the declaration of a shelter crisis pursuant to SB fifty. Staff, who's gonna present?
I will, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So again, two items here before council. One, we're asking you to adopt a memorandum of understanding on Ventura County homelessness and authorizing the mayor to, to execute the agreement. The county is trying to work with all ten cities and, in the county of Ventura, to get them to sign on to this agreement. I know that they have been successful with, with a number of cities, and they're trying to, to get the other city councils to consider the matter as well. And again, the, the key thing there is that we're trying to get everybody to work collaboratively, to try to address this problem of homelessness. We, of course, have one, and really the, the only, and the, the major, and, and in terms of, of a service provider, in the Ojai Valley for homelessness, and that is Help of Ojai. For those who are not aware, and, and Help of Ojai is their executive director, Terry Wolf is here tonight. Help, they accomplish their mission, they do not receive funding from the city, they do not receive funding from the county, they do pursue grants, and, and receive private donations and, and funding, and have other ways that they self-fund. But again, they do not receive any funding from the city or the county to deliver those services, and I just have to say that they do a tremendous job, and I don't think many people realize what they, what they accomplish, basically at no cost to the taxpayer, so. So again, this MOU really is not going to change any of that arrangement. Help of Ojai is already committed to work with the Homeless Management Information System. That is really a, the key in terms of what the county is looking for, to be able to have this integration to, to address this, this system, I mean, to address this problem systematically and county-wide. So, there's really not too much that we're, that we're gonna be on the hook with if we adopt this MOU. It is, it is, it is non-binding, the city could, could withdraw from it, but we, we see benefit to signing on to that. We do not see that it's gonna create any, any complications for, for Help of Ojai, certainly they are here, and they can, they can speak to any concerns that they would have. Also wanted to note that Kristi Madden with the county executive office is also here, in case you have any questions about the program. So if I could just, and then the other item that we're asking you to support is a resolution that would declare a shelter crisis in the city of Ojai. This would allow, again, this is, would actually help the county to be able to utilize, I think there's four-point-eight million dollars in heap funds that are coming down from the state of California, which are going to be distributed throughout the county to provide services to the homeless. Without the declaration of the shelter crisis for Ojai, the county could not apply any of those funds from that particular grant to folks who identify as Ojai residents. So, I'm recommending that the council adopt that tonight, and then that would allow, again, the county to, to use those heap funds to serve Ojai residents. Obviously, they would be able to provide other resources to them through other means, but we think it would be beneficial to try to help the county out as much as possible. Again, there's no cost to the city of Ojai, no cost to the city taxpayers, it just puts more resources at their fingertips to be able to address the problems.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, Kristi, is there anything you wanted to add, or are we okay here?
Good evening, Kristi Madden with the county executive office. I just wanna make a, a point of clarification, those heap funds that are coming down through the county of Ventura are actually going to be awarded to the countywide continuum of care. And the continuum of care is an organization that has broad representation from public and private agencies. Our office happens to provide staff support to the, to the continuum of care. That four-point-eight million dollars, the county of Ventura will be the banker for those funds, because the COC is not a legal entity, per se. So what's happening is, an RFP has been issued, and organizations are applying to the continuum of care for this four-point-eight million dollars. The funding is very flexible to provide services, to deal with the emergency needs, to address people who are homeless in the community. The continuum of care will review and make recommendations on that funding in, in November. That application will be submitted to the state by the end of the calendar year, and those funds should be coming to the continuum of care and communities countywide within the first quarter of twenty-nineteen.
Okay, thank you.
Question?
Yes, Bill?
I think you'd probably be best to answer this question I have.
I'll try.
I noticed that the MOU requires service providers in each community to sign on an agreement with the COC Alliance. It's not a request, it's a requirement.
Correct.
Okay? And, and I assume also that the provisions of that agreement may, the provisions of what constitutes the COC Alliance policies that may evolve and change over time.
It's possible that those conditions could change over time.
Getting to my last question, then. What if there is a service provider that isn't taking public money?
Correct.
But still wants to provide services to homeless, and they have an issue with how the policies have developed within the COC Alliance, are they gonna be prohibited from providing services?
No, no, there would be no way that they would be prohibited from providing services within the community. And most of the conditions and requirements in the MOU that's referenced there, apply primarily to those agencies and organizations that are accepting the public funds that...
Okay, but I mean, the way it was presented, it didn't say getting public funds, it said every, require every.
Correct, we encourage, we encourage everybody who's providing services to homeless people in the county to participate in the Continuum of Care Alliance... people in the county to participate in the continuum of care alliance, getting to the point that the city manager made about regional collaboration. And Help of Ojai is a tremendous partner with us, and they've signed on to the homeless management information system. So, the goal is to try and encourage regional collaboration amongst organizations.
All, all good goals, okay? But all I'm saying is, the memorandum is saying this thing has no expiration, has no term. If we passed it, basically, it continues forever until we change it by council, affirmative council action. And I just, I focused in on that requiring service providers in each community. And over time, over many, many years, there could be developed different, so different service providers may have some different approaches that the COC continuum of care doesn't agree with.
Correct.
And are we going to say, no, you can't do that?
No, no. I mean, the continuum of care has no jurisdictional authority over organizations that are privately funded. It's, it's a statement of collaboration and encouragement.
I'm, I'm thinking of certain church agencies and things like that.
And we would have the right to withdraw if we should, for some reason, have a disagreement.
Correct, you could always withdraw if you wanted to, and that's true. I mean, a lot of church organizations have policies and approaches to dealing with this issue that are not consistent with what the federal government.
That's what I'm thinking about, exactly. So, they're not really required?
No.
Even though it says required?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, you said you were going to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion.
Fine, thank you, Kristi.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
To adopt the memorandum of, memorandum of understanding on Ventura Countywide homelessness and authorize the mayor to execute said agreement and adopt a resolution authorizing the declaration of shelter crisis pursuant to SB 850, chapter 48, et cetera.
Et cetera, okay. As recommended?
As recommended, unless there needs to be.
Okay, so we have a motion to support the recommendations, and staff?
Can I, I'll just ask a question on the motion. I'm still bothered by.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I'm still bothered by the wording. Let me read it out again. Each city and county will, one, commit to actively participate in the continuum of care by requiring service providers in each community to sign on to the memorandum of understanding between the Ventura County Continuum Care Alliance and the organization. Let me ask the city attorney, what does "require" mean in that case exactly, in terms of, say, some, a service provider that does not agree with the policies of the Continuum of Care Alliance?
My understanding is that that language, and this is for those following along bottom of page one attachment, A, is that the city would commit to require the entities within its power. City doesn't actively regulate how churches provide their services.
Exactly.
So, it would only be those entities that are within the city's power to regulate, which would be public entities, publicly funded entities through which the funding loops through the city one way or another. Purely privately funded churches were not, are not within that definition.
So, we're clear, this is not going to be maybe imposing a restriction on some of those types of service providers?
Right. For example, an entity that's entirely privately funded.
Right.
Mindful of the fact that some churches have mixed funding sources.
Right, okay.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Other comments?
I, I just share the same concern, because it seems as though it's a bit ambiguous, where it says requiring all service providers in each community to sign on. It doesn't say all service providers, public service providers, it doesn't, it says all service providers.
Okay, is there a problem if we were to clarify that?
Not at all. One clarification I, I would be to add, by requiring city-funded service providers. The only question I would ask, and perhaps this should be posed to Ms. McHadden from the county executive office, is would that change, by this city, cause a challenge for the other counterparts of the MOU?
Okay.
Yeah. So, this document that is presented was actually developed and circulated amongst the city managers. It's been signed on to by two jurisdictions so far. It is being scheduled for many other city council meetings, but I don't know, and I don't participate in those city manager meetings, Steve. I don't know if they're still discussing it, or if there's, if one jurisdiction changed, clarified, if that would be a significant impact. I, I think it's, it's a statement of collaboration and policy. I think the city attorney's interpretation, certainly the city has no power or authority to require anybody to do anything if you have no legal relationship with that entity. So, I don't know.
Well, it's still an ambiguity. We know what happens with ambiguities.
And it says we're in consideration, we're receiving some sort of compensation for agreeing to that.
Right. So, your suggestion was publicly funded service providers?
Whatever, whatever Mr. Summers thinks clarifies.
Publicly funded or city-funded, either of those would work, I think, capsule the point.
I'm going to make a motion. Well, you wouldn't make a motion.
Okay, it would be broader to say publicly funded, right? And that's what, you're, you're concerned that, that we not be stepping on the toes of private organizations, over which we have no authority.
But we don't imply it in any way.
Okay, I see a waving hand out there. Come on up if you would like.
And this is actually probably Terry Wolf, executive director of Help of Ojai. I think this question probably is for Mr. Summers. So, we don't receive funding, per se, from either the county or the city for providing of our homeless services. However, we do receive forgiven rent. And so, I need to understand what that potentially, what the implications of that would be to this.
As I understand it, Help of Ojai, as you know, does receive forgiven rent under the terms of a long-term lease between the city and Help of Ojai. That would count as city funding. So, Help of Ojai would be subject to this requirement.
Okay, so therefore, then we do probably have, we would have issues, then?
Okay.
Okay. My understanding was that Help of Ojai was already a member of the continuum of care alliance?
No, no, no.
No.
They've only signed on to the homeless management information system.
HMI's.
I'm not saying we wouldn't, but I, it, we do have, and I met with Steve on this issue previously, we have some, you know, we have parameters about our service.
Right.
Providing throughout the Ojai Valley, and there have been times when public funds have been less desirable for us to receive based on administrative burden.
Well, I have a couple of thoughts here to see if maybe we can work our way out of this. One, and this is a bit of a long shot, but, Mr. Summers, is there, you know, there's not a lot of terms that are defined in here, and one of the terms that we're wrestling with is the, is the term of a service provider. Is, is there any wiggle room there in terms of our understanding with that, and exactly how, how, and what entities that would apply to? And then to answer the other question that was posed by Ms. Madden would be, you know, I, I know that the city managers group struggled quite a bit with some of the language in this, including that particular sentence. I don't know how the rest of the group would feel, but obviously, if the council is not comfortable with adopting this with the current language, we could certainly, you know, I can certainly go back to the group and take it up with the group and see if, if perhaps there would be some willingness to make a modification to the, of course, bit of an issue, because we have some organizations that have already signed on to this. So, so I guess that, that's a bit of the rub right there, so.
Mr. Mayor, the other alternative would be to have Help of Ojai review the MOU and see if there's any objection to them signing on to it. And if there is, then we have a problem.
Right, absolutely.
And perhaps another path would be, in addition, as the city manager noted, to adjusting how service providers define, but also perhaps softening the requirement. And again, I'm not entirely sure if this would cause a problem with respect to the county, but not requiring service providers, but merely encouraging.
Could encourage or urge?
Oh, yeah, that's good.
By urging service providers?
The only question there would be, on the substantive level, what would that do with respect to the county's needs?
I understand.
The funding, the funding needs behind this. That might soften it with respect to, say, Help of Ojai.
But the purpose of all this is to become eligible to use, use our funding, or the jurisdictions within, or the providers to become eligible? What?
No, I, the, the intent is to demonstrate regional collaboration and participation. It's just saying that if you have an organization in your community that is helping homeless people in your jurisdiction, we are encouraging, and I think the language in the MOU is stronger than that, and saying, we want you to commit to require organizations that serve homeless people to sign on to the MOU with the countywide continuum of care. So, this is really not...
But to gain what?
Just to demonstrate regional collaboration and cooperation.
And we want to demonstrate that.
Correct.
To achieve what?
So that we have a cohesive system operating in the county addressing homelessness, so you don't have one jurisdiction that has these policies that are addressing homelessness that are contrary to another jurisdiction. Part of the issue, I think, that happened at the, at the city managers group was, they said, we don't want to create a situation where we have jurisdictions that have different types of programs in communities, where we create an environment where people are encouraged to move from one community to another, to take advantage of a service here versus this.
Of course.
If we have regional collaboration, we all agree, the countywide continuum of care is public, private, nonprofit organizations, and they all say, this is the best strategy with proven techniques for addressing homelessness. We're all going to commit to do these things. And so, the MOU says, we, as jurisdictions, agree that this is good, we're going to try and encourage people in our communities to do this.
Okay, but in, in doing this, I mean, it's an expression of our willingness to cooperate or collaborate with our neighbors.
Correct.
And have a uniform system. The obliga, the obligation to stay in or to get out, it's not like getting a federal grant where if you, you received a million dollars, and if you don't comply with this, pay the million dollars back with penalties or something. There's none of that. We're just, this is an expression. So, we, is it, the city attorney, could we not, if we were to approve this, could we not then unapprove it and withdraw if we felt that it was onerous on the agencies that we're working with? Or is this something we need to continue so that, like Help of Ojai, could at least weigh in and advise us as to what their concern is? I guess I'm sort of like this.
I have one other question, too, that if, if Matt's answering questions. It says that we're acknowledging that we, for good and valuable consideration, the receipt and sufficiency of what is hereby acknowledged. Well, what are we, what is that consideration that we, that we're receiving? It's good and valuable consideration. What is that we're getting? I don't understand what it is we're getting, yeah.
I'll attempt to answer those two questions, Mr. Mayor. The first, to Mayor's question, yes, certainly it could be withdrawn later. The council can always withdraw, with certain exceptions, anything you enter into in the first place. And to answer Councilmember Blatz's question, my understanding of the consideration that the city is receiving in return for entering into this MOU is a significantly greater chance of receiving that state grant funding for the city and for the county, in the city through the county. But I'm not sure, A, if any of that will directly flow to the city on its own books as opposed to flowing to the community that the city contains.
It's the latter, yeah, it's the latter. It would not, would not be coming through the city.
It'll flow to entities that serve the city, but not to the city directly.
That's correct.
So, the demonstration is to, is not only to encourage people to cooperate, but to encourage funding to come to all the various agencies that could benefit.
Correct, and demonstrate consistency of methodology and, and how we're addressing homelessness. And I will tell you that homeless funding in this county, whether it's county-managed City of Oxnard Emergency Solutions Grant or the HEAP funding, it all goes through the countywide continuum of care, their board, who weighs in on funding recommendations, and those policies and procedures are all outlined in the MOU. So, even if an organization didn't want to abide by those priorities, they're not going to be able to access that funding anyway, right? Because if the continuum of care is complying with this set of guidelines, and this organization over here wants to implement this program that's not a best practice to address homelessness, they're not going to be able to qualify for funding through the continuum of care anyway.
The consideration, okay.
Correct.
Mayor, I just, we could get completely lost in this. It sounds like there's two issues going on, a public and private. What's been the outreach to the private sources? It's, what I'm hearing is, is we, you want cities to sign the MOU and to encourage the private sectors to abide by it. It seems to me someone should have went out and talked to these private entities and said, what do you believe in this program, or what do you see in this program, and what are the benefits to you? It, it seems like what, what I'm hearing is you want us to do that for the whole.
No.
No, not really. I mean, we have the countywide continuum of care alliance is an organization that is probably, they meet quarterly, and there's like eighty or more organizations who attend.
Is Help of Ojai in that?
So, yeah, Help of Ojai is certainly on the distribution list, and they've come to meetings in the past. So, it's a very broad group. And we do get some of the religious churches come and funded, non-funded organizations. We have schools that are there. There's a lot of different groups and organizations that participate in the countywide continuum of care. And they meet regularly to try and ensure that we have consistent approaches and practices to dealing with this issue, so that we can have the best possible outcomes in addressing homeless issues countywide.
So, the, the funding that would be recommended or be shared through what you called the county is holding the money as a bank, continuum of care would be making these recommendations or advice as to who's getting these, these funds? And in order to qualify for those funds, each individual organization, public or private, I presume have to say that they would abide by what now would become a, a general set of standards in all cities.
Well, I, we have two separate issues on this council item tonight. So, we have the resolution for the crisis shelter resolution, which is mandated in order to access the HEAP funding. We have the memo, the countywide memorandum of understanding that the city managers crafted, that are being circulated to all ten cities, saying, we all want to row in the same direction. How can we do that? They drafted this MOU that outlines parameters and said, let's try and encourage all of our organizations in our respective cities to sign on and be in alignment with the countywide continuum of care. That's what that countywide MOU is trying to do.
Mayor Johnston?
Okay, yeah, Bill?
Following up just that statement, I'm going to, because it said encourage and urge, I'm going to make a, a motion to amend, a motion for an amendment to the motion on the table, to change the word "requiring" to "urging." And the statement of commit to actively participate in the continuum of care by urging service providers in each community to sign on, that's going to be my motion, amendment, a motion.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
It's not seconded yet, sir.
Don't you say, you get a second. Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I understand it, the, the action, again, council doesn't need to take any action tonight, but, but there is, there is some timeliness in, in terms of adopting the resolution for the shelter crisis.
Crisis resolution.
If council doesn't have any concerns with, with that item, I would recommend that perhaps we consider adopting that tonight. And I would then further recommend that we table this item on the MOU. We don't have to have that resolved this evening. It would give me an opportunity to go back, talk a little bit more with, with Ms. Madden, with, with Ms. Wolf. Also, I could have some conversation with my colleagues at the Ventura, at the city managers group, too. Again, this is not, you know, this is reaching other jurisdictions about the same time. They may be having the same feedback or concern. So, let me get back to the group on that one, and then we could get that item back before the city council at a later date. But again, I recommend.
I'll change my suggestion for an amendment, that we amend the motion to just be approving of number two.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Is any further discussion on the, the motion? If, do we need a roll call?
Yes, resolution.
Okay, please call the roll. Yes.
Mayor Protamahini?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyreck?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passed. Okay, the, the second part of it is, is you're recommending that we just simply refer this back to staff. You'll talk with the city managers and other parties that have an interest in it, see if this could maybe be clarified or recrafted?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
And see if it could be made acceptable.
Yes, thank you.
So ordered, if there's no objection? Okay?
And just as a final comment on it, principally, it's Help of Ojai that we're concerned about. If, if Help of Ojai agreed to sign on to this MOU, I have no problem with it. But for us to say that we're going to require them to.
Right.
And then, and they don't do it.
Urge them to.
Then, yeah, but urging doesn't do anything.
I know.
Urging doesn't meet what they want.
I think we need, we need more information. Certainly, we, we have a fabulous organization in town.
So, I would request that.
Excellent track record.
The city manager discuss it with Help of Ojai, and if they can sign on with it, then it doesn't need to go any further.
Okay, we are now on item number six, site coverage of residential zoning districts lacking coverage standards.
I'll leave for a minute.
This is a report back from the planning commission, recommending that we leave things alone, right?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Recommending us do nothing.
Remember, city council again. Yes, we have a discussion item before you tonight. Members of city council again. Yes, we have a discussion item before you tonight on a fairly dry subject. Site coverage standards for the three residential zoning districts, the large lot zoning districts in the city of Ojai. This would be the R-01, R-02, R-04, where the minimum lot size is one to four acres respectively. There is a table at the back of the staff report that's taken from the City of Ojai Municipal Code, that's Table 2-3, that shows all of the city's residential zoning districts. And as you see on the R-04, R-02, and R-01, unlike the smaller lot residential zoning districts, the zoning ordinance is essentially silent on building coverage standards for those larger lots. This issue went before the planning commission on June 6th as a discussion item. And I guess essentially like one of the, the points I had there is by not having coverage standards, there's nothing required to have them. And in the staff report, I had cited several jurisdictions, County Ventura, Montecito, Town of Woodside up in the Bay Area, that have some larger lot residential zoning districts. Some use coverage, which typically runs like twenty-five to thirty-five percent of the site. The Ojai zoning districts where you do use coverage, thirty-five percent is the norm. But for applying coverage, and again, this is just a building area, not hardscape, coverage can apply to a lot of things like paving and have other purposes. But in this case, it's building coverage, which is generally designed to keep open space on single-family lots. Where you get into larger lots, like one to four acres, certainly four and five acre lot, coverage is not really the best mechanism to limit, say, a house size. Typically jurisdictions that put coverage restraints in or floor area ratio restraints are dealing with sort of the, the monster house issue or whatever you want to characterize that as. Town of Woodside, I know very much, had that in the Bay Area, which is why they didn't use coverage at all, as is said in the staff report, but went floor area ratio to try to really limit not only the envelope, but the height and massing of the house as well. So when this had gone to the planning commission in June, essentially my question was, is what's the problem you're trying to solve? Do you have one? Are you trying to fill in the blanks on Table 2-3, or are you trying to actually solve a problem? So most of the lots this would pertain to in Ojai are in the Arbolaata on the north or south in Persimmon Hill Country Club area. My sense was that you don't really have an issue with excessively large homes, and that's not a discussion that's really been on the table. In one of the examples, I think, had in the report as well, if you've got a four or five acre lot, even if you take a very low coverage, ten percent, fifteen percent, you could still have somebody propose a house, say, the size of Westridge Grocery, and it would fit. So our discussion in the planning commission that night, I know I had listed, and the staff report is very similar, you know, you could have options, essentially do nothing. Your codes worked like it has all this time without the coverage standard for these zoning districts. You could take a thirty-five percent standard like you have on the smaller lot residential zoning districts. You could go with something less, something like you have a sliding scale for as the lot gets larger, the coverage is lower. Or, and this was one of the, the final bullet I had on the last page of the staff report, is if you really think you have an issue to solve with, say, house size or structure size, go with something like use your design review process or have a floor area ratio standard, say, like Town of Woodside has. I believe that was part of the, planning commission's recommendation was, don't add coverage standards, but consider using the design review process for something like, say, caps. Somebody has a ten thousand square foot house, that would have to go through design review with the planning commission. Now, there was no hard and fast standard. I just said the ten thousand square feet. But essentially, don't try to solve this through coverage. Try to find another mechanism that would address large structures.
Mayor Johnston, I have a couple of questions.
Okay, Bill?
So in other words, the planning, one of the planning commission's ideas was to take away the ministerial permit for residential properties on large lots and make them have to go through design review or discretionary.
That's true. If it were.
That's what they were suggesting.
Correct. Because right now, it's just two stories.
Right.
Would go through, so.
One-story residential property on large lots would have to go through a discretionary review process, whereas now it's ministerial. That's what the planning commission had in their minds.
Right. It was not fleshed out, but right.
As, as being better than just having a lot coverage standard.
Right. Under that scenario, if you had a large.
I just want to make sure I understand.
If you had a large, one-story home.
I got it.
Go to the planning commission for a discretionary.
Now, the other thing I thought was interesting that I hadn't thought about until, was in the staff report, it was about hard surface, this coverage standards could also be for hard, hard surface limitations. Does that mean that for a one acre lot in our current, the way we currently have it set up, that someone could go in and decide to asphalt or concrete eighty percent or with buildings, get up to eighty percent coverage with impermeable paving and there's nothing the city could do about it?
I haven't seen anything in the zoning ordinance that prevents that type of coverage.
That would be an allowed outcome under our current zoning code.
Currently, there's more of a trend for coverage being used to solve things like storm drainage rather than building size.
We could also, we could also consider making changes with lot, with a lot coverage standards to prevent that kind of outcome, which currently could occur without the city being able to hang about it.
You could do it through coverage by saying having impermeable surface coverage or even a cap, one example.
Just something I hadn't thought about.
Yeah, County of Monterey, not countywide. Areas in Pebble Beach, depending on which watershed you're in, have a nine thousand square foot impermeable surface cap.
I'm trying to think about what might happen in a Persimmon Hill if someone decided to create an asphalt area, you know, that covered seventy or eighty percent of the lot.
Lengthy driveways, auto courts, things like that can add up. Yeah, you can get quite a large area of paving and then with a large house on top of that.
Just a question.
What, what, what happened to, do we have some kind of a regulation regarding water of being, leaving the, the, the building site as opposed to?
Not through planning regulations, but again, through stormwater runoff permits, it's looked at through that. But, and again, I'm not up on all the square footage levels, but I think where we're going here would be actually having something in the zoning ordinance for residential uses where you're looking at.
Would the other cover that, Bill?
I'm not sure. That's why I asked the question.
If you can't shed the water, then you, you can't have it impermeable. What are you doing?
I'm not sure. That's why I asked the question.
Or what it forces too, is that where you would have traditional paving, you would then have to make that permeable. So use of permeable pavers that are entered for water to percolate down.
I just don't know how this interacts. That's what I'm saying.
Right, and I, I just threw it in because the, the staff report and the issue really pertained to building coverage.
I understand.
But coverage is.
But, but the staff report raised the issue of hard surfacing as well.
It's an issue that's coming up in more jurisdictions where you're dealing with large residential lots.
Look, I have, I have two questions. One, wouldn't some of this be addressed in the landscape ordinance as far as lot coverage and permeability and stormwater capture?
It may, it may be, and I will say, I'm not as familiar with that right now.
I think that would only be if they're trying to get a permit to modify the building.
Right, well, well.
Whereas it's just paving on an existing building.
Well, that's existing. I'm thinking more of, of getting the new application.
Perhaps the point I could add is that the landscaping ordinance wouldn't, it would regulate, it does regulate rather than would, it does regulate the types of landscaping and thus the water usage that ties to it, depending on the square footage. And so then a one acre lot would be picked up. But the landscaping ordinance by itself wouldn't prohibit paving at eighty percent.
I was asking that question.
Right. For, for instance, I just, there was a project that just recently went to the planning commission where the, there was a large paved area for parking and drive aisles, which was coming out and pavers were going in. But these were not permeable pavers.
Right.
So that would be the difference, say, in areas where you require permeability either through capping square footage or a percentage. You would then be requiring up to a certain point, it either, if you need paving, it's gonna have to be permeable.
So, so, so Bill's concern could actually be addressed somewhere else based on us, based on planning, reviewing permeable surfaces.
Correct.
And setting limits or minimums. The other question is, are we having a problem with this? Because you pretty much stated, you asked that question. Are we having eighty thousand or fifty thousand or sixty thousand or forty thousand square foot homes?
I've not seen them.
In this community?
I've, I've not seen them. And the reaction at the planning commission in June was no, that that is not an issue. I've seen very few building plans, but there are homes in the scale maybe four thousand, forty-five hundred square feet, nothing ten thousand plus.
By, I didn't listen to the debate at the planning commission on this, but by implication, they're saying, I'm thinking they're saying, "Leave it alone, but if you want to do something, consider the design review process." Is that?
Correct. They.
Are you looking for direction back from the councils to whether the council thinks design review process is necessary? Or are they saying they think it's necessary?
I think their conclusion was, is that if there was a problem, and I don't think people felt there was, coverage was not the solution to it. That if there were an issue, say, with.
I got that part of it.
Reviewing.
But the design review that Bill was addressing, which is putting a further review on somebody in an R-1 zone, was the planning commission saying they thought that was necessary? Or were they merely saying that if you want to try to address, assuming there is a problem, this would be a better way to go?
The latter. They did not feel strongly.
And the problem I raise is, is just, that's a huge other burden to put.
So short of a motion by the council saying, "Yeah, we think we should pursue design review," it sounds like this issue's done.
Yeah, I've.
It's done. I agree with you. That's just nothing.
Okay, is that your interpretation?
That's it. I would, I would concur with the planning commission.
I think that, that the idea was that how lar, even though we don't have necessarily the problem, it doesn't mean somebody couldn't come in tomorrow and create the problem. How large a single story, because it's really only single story.
Correct. They're ministerial.
How large a single story house would we allow by, by just permit approval and not want to look at it?
It's a ministerial.
That's the question.
Right.
And do we want to allow a thirty thousand square foot, single story house? If the, if the coverage is all right, do we mind if that happens? And if the answer to that is we don't care, then we leave it alone. If not, I think we need to look at it.
Um, I would.
I, I care. We have, we've had this outcry against tiny homes. We should have an outcry about, on the homes that are too big.
Well, let's see, let's, let's see that outcry come to us. Because I, I don't, that's why I'm asking.
Okay, well.
I don't have a sense that that's, that there's a problem here.
Do we have a motion?
Leave it alone.
Leave it alone.
Yeah.
Now, what about the point you raised?
I think it's a separate issue. I think we might want to be looking at my, I have a concern, but again, if no one else shares my concern, then.
I, I have, I share your concern.
In terms of having limitations on non-permeable, hard surface coverage, I, I think that, that's a, could be an issue.
Okay, that, that becomes a separate topic.
Separate topic.
And the, and the whole issue about how we want to slow it, spread it, and sink it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's a serious issue.
So that's why I asked about the flood regulations. And it sounds like we have some tools already, but if, we need a few more at a later date, we won't solve it tonight.
Think about it and get some recommendations.
Okay, so if there's no objection, we will leave it as it is. And staff and planning, if you think you need more tools to keep from shedding water instead of sinking it, let us know. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're down to the, what do I do with my agenda?
City Managers' Report.
Mr. City Manager, you want to, you got anything for us tonight?
Just, just a couple of things. One, really on the lines of general announcements, this is not being put on by the city, although it's at a city facility. Tuesday, October 2nd, there is going to be a candidates forum organized, hosted by the League of Women's Voters. That's going to be Tuesday, October 2nd at 7:00 PM at the Boyd Center. We will be taping the, the forum to, for replay on Channel 10, just to get that little announcement out there. But again, that's being coordinated through the League of Women Voters. And then also wanted to remind council as well as the public that we have a, we're going to have a special joint meeting to talk about the ATP program, joint meeting with the planning commission. That's going to be on October 16th, also at the Boyd Center. That meeting is going to be at 6:00 PM. Also wanted to note that the, the budget committee met last week. We're still working through a number of issues. We took a look at the early returns on our revenues and expenditures. And of course, it's very early in the fiscal year. We don't have many of our revenues in yet, but to date, we have not encountered anything that's any cause for concern, either at the staff level or at the, or at the committee level, if I may be so bold. We're still working through, coming back with the recommendations to revise the city reserve policy. So we will be getting that back to the budget committee probably next month and then hopefully to council shortly thereafter. And then we also took a look at some of the potential impacts from the minimum wage going up and how that's going to be affecting our, our part-time recreation folks. So took a look at that, make sure that everything's in, in good order. Also wanted to note, and I didn't get a chance to even look out there, but I believe Mr. Grant had one of our new trolleys out on the street for, for display. So in case people were wondering what that was, that's one of our new trolleys, soon to be put back into, soon to be put into operation. That's all I have for quick announcements.
Can I just ask, is the new trolley going to be out there tomorrow?
I don't believe it was, but I, I could, is there a need or request?
I think it's at the yard probably. Is it in service already?
I don't believe it is.
Okay. No, you don't have to leave it out special. I just thought if people wanted to see it, if we knew it was out there, they might.
I don't know that there was any plans to keep it on, on, beyond tonight's.
Thank you.
They'll see it on patrol.
There you go. Right.
Paul, do you have anything to add?
I have, I don't have anything.
Okay. Yeah, I do. Well, first I want to request that if the, if a presentation is canceled, if it's, if there's enough time, could you let us know and then we could suggest a substitute presentation?
Sure. We found that out this, today.
Yeah, yeah. Even a few hours, because I have people that want to present things. I could, even if it's just a day's notice.
Well, the issue would be, well, I guess you, I guess council could amend the agenda to allow that, but I don't, we start to run into issues with amending the agenda without an emergency and we're running into Brown Act issues at that point.
Okay.
So, well, we can certainly make an effort to get that out as soon as we know.
Mayor, are we on council member?
Okay, so you're saying that unless it's a three-day, or unless you know by Thursday or Friday?
In order to amend the agenda to be legal with the Brown Act, right.
You're, you're gonna report, first and then we'll, we'll.
Oh, these are just reports?
This is the council member reports.
Okay. I just want to report that Greg Grant did a great job at the first public outreach meeting on the, the city's act of transportation project. And I want to encourage the public to attend this, this Saturday, September 29th, 10 o'clock to 12 o'clock at City Hall.
Thank you.
Okay, 10 to 12 this Saturday?
Yeah.
Nothing.
Yeah. I, I wanted to say that I, it doesn't happen often that I attend a convention where it exceeds expectations. And I want to thank the council for allowing me to be alternate with the League of California Cities Convention. It was enormously useful from a standpoint of information and talking to people about a lot of issues and getting, I have a lot of information about a number of things of concern to us I'm going to be sharing after I distill it and everything, including things that are really big issues with us. For example, a lot of new legislation coming out in terms of encouraging agencies to work together on repurposing public land like surplus school properties, where we can have tools to help us make the case for mutual self-interest being between a city and a, and a school system, working together rather than working separately on something as important as our repurposing of acreage in the center of our town. So a lot of, a lot of information about that, and I'm, I'm looking forward to disseminating that. Because I think we're going to be running into a need to, in effect, think out of the box in terms of, of how, what happens with the school system property. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is that I was very proud to vote for, you know, Randy was going to, but I got to vote for things like, you know, they had an assembly and everything. We, a little bit of dissension, but voting for the request to allow, remove the preemption to allow cities to make their own regulations with respect to things like pesticide use. And it was, it was, it was a good experience to, to advocate for that. And then finally, I want to report that the Economic Development Collaborative that I'm on, on the board has recently received a fairly large sum of money to distribute for supplemental small business services from the governor's office. It's about half a million dollars. Some of that would be coming to, you know, for Ojai. I expressed the preference, subject to, you know, council input, you know, my, my support for that going through our new chamber president. And I thought that was a, a good place for that to be, to be, to run through unless, you know, the council has any objections. That would be my support in terms of my position on the board.
in terms of my position on the board. So, that's my two council member reports, I have a future agenda item too.
Okay, I have a, just my bi-weekly reminder, the Clean Power Alliance is moving right along, things are going well, the schedule, this is, for those who watch this later or are paying attention at home, that residential customers will be enrolled in the 100% renewable energy program, and, but they, everyone has the opportunity to, what they call opt-down, if they don't want 100%, they can, they have some other choices. So, it's a, that will be, it'll be February of 2019 and our commercial areas will be eligible for it or will be enrolled in it as of May of 2019, so that, and I also wanted to say thank you and welcome to Sergeant Wolf, who is sitting in, this actually is fairly short.
Yeah, you're lucky tonight, you're very lucky.
We really drag old Chief Freihoff through.
That's been the ongoing joke, Mr. Mayor, is every time that Jim's not here, we have rather brief council meetings, so.
It's his fault, it's his fault.
Yeah, it hasn't escaped Jim, he thinks we do that deliberately too.
He does.
And I also want to just mention our Jack Smith, who passed away recently, a coach, a principal, a great citizen of our town and touched a lot of, a lot of young people's lives. Okay, we are now to future agenda items.
I have one really quick, another one of the seminars that I went to that was very informative emphasized emphatically the importance of city councils in adopting local SEQA guidelines. We've not done this, new SEQA guidelines are coming out, and they emphasized how important it was for these, these policies and protocols that are within local discretion to be adopted by councils, because if council does not adopt them, the vacuum is filled by staff interpretation. And that is subject to, I think, a lot of problems, basically ceding a policy responsibility to staff that should not be doing policy decisions by default. And I just wanted to throw that out, that it's something that's not been done historically by this council, it is done by a lot of other councils, and that especially with the new round of rules coming out that affect all discretionary permit reviews, that we probably need to take this on.
Okay, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just actually wanted to, without getting above my station, second that point, that the new SEQA, the new state SEQA guidelines are rather comprehensive rewrites of the existing SEQA guidelines, and there's a number of points at which this council, I expect, based on your past expressed preferences, will want to adopt local guidelines to implement local priorities and the city's existing local preferences, so I would second the council taking a look at that in the coming months.
Okay, well, there's no objection, we'll have that direct staff at, in the reasonably near future, have these laws already been promulgated, are they?
No, not yet effective, the state is in their somewhat interminable draft and common draft and common process.
Okay, well, as soon as the state gets theirs together and the city manager will put it on the agenda.
Next year.
I would assume that that would be part of the general plan update that we're thinking of doing, that would be the time to actually-
No, no.
No, it could actually, yeah, it could precede it.
Yeah, they are-
But it does overlap it.
It overlaps, but it is distinct.
Okay.
It is distinct, because if the council doesn't act, then all discretionary reviews simply get staff interpreted in terms of adopting SEQA guidelines, whether or not the general plan is adopted.
Okay.
The general plan, it is something that has to be included, but for example, defining thresholds-
We'll put it on the agenda and debate it when it gets here, you may have a, have a point.
We do not want to wait for the general plan update to do it, I don't think.
Okay, anything else for the agenda, no?
Yeah, I got something to say.
Just, well, I have something to say, just a second, we're talking about agenda, right? Future agendas?
Well, maybe it's a future agenda, I want to address-
Okay, hang on then, Randy, do you have anything else? Okay, go.
Okay, I again want to make my case that we keep the public comments at 7:00 and I see more and more reasons for doing that, that was always my position, I know we're experimenting, but I, I believe that extra hour, there's three or four things that's happening, people don't want to wait that extra hour. Secondly, when we have presentations, the public should hear those presentations, if we have the, if we have the public hearing at 8, most people will miss the presentation and it's wintertime, it's even harder for people to come out at 8:00, you know, instead of 7:00, and I find it very discombobulating to stop midstream when we're discussing an item, to go to public comment, we were very lucky tonight, we only had two speakers, but what if people do adjust and start coming back at 8:00? So, I just would like you to consider going back to 7:00.
Okay, that's a decision for the council to make, I don't think we've, we've only done it really once, and it seemed to work okay.
We had three two weeks ago.
We, we, we did it-
Three tonight.
We did it before, anyway, I, I really, I feel like the public comments at the beginning is a welcoming gesture to the community to participate, I think it sets the tone and I, I think the public brings up items, you know-
Okay, what's the council's pleasure?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to at least to try it a little longer, I'm not, I listen to what you're saying, but-
Yeah, suddenly nobody, I mean, I don't know if this is the result of having it 8:00 or not, the last time I thought we put it on at 8:00, we then suspended that and took it up early because we only had a few cars.
But, what we did last time was we had a few, a few cards at the beginning and then people did come again at, at 8:00.
Right.
So, we had two public hearings.
And they weren't denied though, were they?
No, I'm just expressing my extreme displeasure.
My comment on it would be, this is the community's house and they are more than welcome to come here and voice their opinion as to when they would like to make public comment, so we're trying something, we're going to see if it works, if the community doesn't like it, the community will come and tell us so, and I think that's what it should be open to.
Okay, and we, we also should be sensitive that if suddenly we got an empty house all the time, our purpose is not to hide, we want to be, have engagement and we want to be transparent on everything, but the, some of the experiences told us that folks get confused and then they get up under public comment and then they get up again and pretty soon it's midnight, you know, so, but I think you make a good point, and I know that we-
And especially that they're going to miss the presentations.
But they can come for the presentation.
We don't have presentations very often and if there isn't a special thing that says presentations every week, at least-
If they want to see the presentation, they can come early.
Right.
I mean, my, yeah, I, the, the, the issue that I see is that, number one, you're not going to get them trying to talk on two issues and have to be interrupted and, and the mayor's going to have to tell them to sit down till the agenda comes, or they don't know they're talking about the, and it's really, we spend more time in public comment than any board that I've ever been on, because really, you're just supposed to listen and only in those real emergency situations are you supposed to refer to staff for future discussion. We carry on discussions back and forth and we want to call on people, I mean, it's not intended to do that, it's just not intended, in fact, I think it's a violation of the Brown Act to probably carry on a lot within the public comment, although-
More than brief comments, yes, and certainly never take action without justification of doing so.
Okay, that brings, that brings me to a question, if someone in the public has a misunderstanding, whose job is it to correct that misunderstanding rather than that they leave and not know that they've misinterpreted something?
Respectfully, there is no duty to correct misunderstandings held by members of the public, although as is obvious, the city may find it valuable, or the council may find it valuable to make that correction in order to ensure that the record is clear, but there's no, there's no direct duty to ensure that everyone who ends their comment period with the correct understanding.
If someone is making a major misstatement of fact, then I think it is our obligation to clarify that, not so much for the individual making the, the misstatement who may be doing it intentionally or out of ignorance, but for the community not to go away with the idea that that was accurate. If it is just simply not clear, or like the difference between 6:00 and 7:00 or when something was enacted or not, you know, that I don't think rises to the level of a misstatement of fact, that's just, you know, communication and maybe not as accurate as it needs to be, but we don't regulate and edit everything that the people say under public comment, at least that would not be my intention to do that, let them say what they have to say, and if there needs to be a clarification, we make it, but we don't have to get into a give and take with them, I think that is, you know, it may on some occasions be beneficial and a lot of times it just takes up their time, so, okay, Steve?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I missed three real quick things, one I wanted to announce and I think members of the council are aware of this, but we do have our nuclear-free zone signs, they have been approved by Caltrans, there's an event, I believe, scheduled to install the sign at the Y this Wednesday, and I know there was a gathering at the park last weekend as well, so just to let you know that that's moving forward, those are going up. Also want to let you know that I reached out to the contractor that's working on the, the Ojai Theater, and he, they are still expecting to have that work complete by the end of this year, so that's where they're at with that. And then also as a follow-up, and I know Councilmember Wyrick had mentioned the Prop 68 funds, and we're scouring that to see possible applications for the city, and in doing so, we also came across the fact that the city will be receiving $200,000 as a non-competitive funding from the, from the state through the Prop 68 grant, so we expect that that will be arriving in the spring of 2019, so we'll need to get that into the budget and, and discuss that.
Specify what we want to do with it?
Well, we would need some specificity on how we want to spend that, right.
Like maybe looking at the Libby Park Master Plan Update or something like that.
That's, those are all, I believe, we will come to council in terms of any, how those funds could be used.
$200,000, you say none?
It's $200,000, we don't have to compete for it, we don't have to, it's, it's-
Okay, so it's an allocation and there are-
Correct.
There are restrictions as to how it's to be used?
I will need to check on that, there's no match amount, they have to be expended for park or recreation facility improvements, so we'll, we'll get into the weeds on exactly what, what that will mean, so, but we, we expect that the city, that the state will allocate those in the spring of 2019, when exactly it will be received by the city, I'm not sure at this point, but we at least can count on that coming.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Greatness.
Thank you, guys, 9:30.
Greatness.